I'm coming out of a transportation workshop and thank you. Hope you felt welcome this evening by our information technology director, Aaron Irwin, and our human resources manager, Samantha Potts, who served as our greeters this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right and your left, we have our recording secretary, Taylor Lockhart, our city clerk, Susan Daederes, our Zone One Commissioner, Dwight Selby, our Zone Two Commissioner, Troy Kent.
Hi, everybody.
To my left and your right, our deputy mayor and Zone Three Commissioner, Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Zone Four Commissioner, Rob Littleton. And then down in front, we have City Manager Joyce Shanahan. Next to her is Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. And Randy, I missed you on the first pass, but City Attorney Randy Hayes is also with us on the dais tonight. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. And at this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and rise for the invocation given by Evangelist John J.S. Seelin with Bethel Ministries. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Our gracious heavenly Father, we love you and adore you. We bow down before you. Lord, these city leaders are precious whom you have appointed over us, and they have invited your presence. And all of us collectively, we ask for your presence to cover this meeting. Father, you told us in your word, "If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven. I will forgive their sin, and I will heal their land." Father, we pray that you heal our land from COVID-19, from all the other things that are disturbing our land. And we lift up the city of Daytona Beach and these precious leaders that you've given us as gifts, Lord, to lead us and guide us. I pray that you bestow upon them your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and give all of the inhabitants of this city, Lord, your presence to help us to walk in righteousness with you and holiness with you, and do the things according to your will. Bless us and bless these leaders and their families, and bless all the families that are here, Lord God, in this town. We give you all the glory and honor and praise. We ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 I present this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask Evelyn Rabestini and Angie Pye, Donna Elsner, and Michelle, help me out on the last line.
Ficcello.
Ficcello, thank you, to come forward. This is a proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If you guys will stand right here facing out towards the audience, and I'm not sure where the proclamation is, but we'll get it for you. There it is. I'm going to read it, and then we're going to have the commission stand behind you for a picture. I've got it right here. The actual, yeah, she's got it. Whereas domestic violence is violent or aggressive behavior typically within the home involving the abuse of a member of one's immediate family, and whereas domestic violence poisons relationships, destroys lives, and shatters the bedrock of our society, the family, homes should be places of comfort and stability where love and mutual respect thrive. Domestic violence erodes this environment, leaving many in potentially life-threatening situations. And whereas domestic violence affects everyone regardless of income, race, gender, or socioeconomic status, still, women make up a disproportionately higher number of victims of domestic violence, with nearly half of female homicide victims being killed by a current or former male partner. And whereas Ormond Beach, Florida is a vibrant city, home to over 44,000 residents and hosts to over 5 million guests who have the right to hope, freedom, economic security, safety, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we commit ourselves to ending this unconscionable cycle of abuse in our city, every day in Ormond Beach, individuals and organizations play a part in supporting people impacted by domestic violence, providing services that include therapy, legal, education, housing, advocacy, and medical. We commend the heroes who courageously answer the call for help time and time again. And whereas this month, we do not simply reflect on this unacceptable atrocity, we offer our compassion, respect, support, and protection to the victims and survivors while reaffirming our commitment to holding their perpetrators accountable and offering hope to those who currently reside in volatile and unsafe living conditions. We strengthen our resolve to ensure homes are places of refuge, comfort, and protection, not places of fear and abuse. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Ormond Beach, and urge its residents, agencies, and champions to support efforts that prevent and end domestic That's the proclamation. And commission, if you'll stand with me behind these representatives, and we will get some pictures.
Thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners for their outstanding leadership and support, and we appreciate this always, and thank you for having us this evening in this proclamation.
Glad to have you, and really, it's the whole commission that recognizes the hard work that you all do on a continual basis, and it gives not only the survivors of domestic abuse hope, but it gives the rest of us hope as well when we see the caring and the time and effort that you put into helping try and assuage this problem that we've, it's a continual problem. We've dealt with it for years. I remember 20-some years ago, as a domestic violence prosecutor, there was an entire team dedicated to prosecuting domestic violence. And we've made some progress, but yet, there's still a lot of work to do. So Evelyn, we appreciate, obviously, as our victim advocate, everything that you do. Ormond Beach is lucky to have you, and then the representatives from the Beacon Center do so much as well, and so we're proud to present that to you, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll make sure we get those distributed. We'll move to audience remarks. The first card I have is Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard. Yeah, I wanted to start out tonight, you know, censorship is getting really ugly now, and I'm concerned about the directions things are going with Big Tech. I don't think the First Amendment is being followed to any degree. It wasn't designed to hear what you wanted to hear. It was to hear both sides of the issue. Right now, we're only hearing one side of the issue. And how does that apply? Well, like locally, I like to listen or go to Dr. Mercola's website. Dr. Mercola actually lives in town, John Anderson here. But what's happening is censorship, like just a couple days ago, YouTube decided they're not going to carry any of its videos for his, you know, number-one natural health website in the world. Guess what? If you get deplatformed by YouTube on videos, and they had already, he was listed as number one on the top 12 for misinformation, based upon what? The reality is, he often footnotes 30, 40 scientific articles. When I hear Dr. Fauci, it's more, I'm Dr. Fauci, Mr. Science. And then he flip-flops 30 minutes later and says the opposite of what he said before. I expect a little bit more out of anybody, but especially somebody that's controlling your life, and I do mean your life. When you're talking about lockdowns mandatory, not, you know, I'm never going to go there till, I'm going to go there all day and night and, you know, I want to see reality, I want to see safety, and I don't think we're seeing it. And I don't think the censorship happens accidentally. There's an intent there. And like even on the fluoridation issue, which I've been involved in a long time, the UK is getting ready to make it mandatory also. They referred to, there is no data showing that levels of fluoride that they put in the water is, has any negative health effects. They sort of forgot the 60 studies that show neurotoxic damage, or the last several that it damages IQ in kids. But again, they're just doctors and scientists. They thought they'd lie. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Don Miller.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about Riverbend Golf Course at the encouragement of Dwight Selby, and about the 140-acre Riverbend Golf Course. When options for Riverbend were discussed at the March 16th meeting, issuing an RFP for new management to take over the course as is was not mentioned by any commissioner as an option, for none of the commissioners proposed exploring RFP was odd, but confirmed that Riverbend was slated for closing no matter what. Closed despite it being clear that Riverbend Golf was grandfathered in by the FAA as long as there were no additions to the course that might compromise aviation safety, and there were not. For some reason, the commission staffed the misapplied FAA Guideline 5190, Chapter 21, to Riverbend as if it is a new golf course. FAA Guideline 5190 does say building a new golf course on raw airport land may not be advisable, yet not prohibited. Riverbend is not there, so it doesn't even fall, excuse me, near the misapplied guideline. One of the FAA cautions is that if you build a new golf course and the airport needs some of these holes in the future, the public would scream. The FAA was right. The public did scream, in protest with a 1,300 signature petition and on social media. Now the city will have to pay Riverbend's property taxes, they were trying to avoid, and have no golf course to show for it. Then we find out Hoyle Tanner said that the three holes needed for the new runway extension crash zone could be rerouted and not destroyed by the next owner, so that was not the reason to close. What really needs to happen for Riverbend Golf is for one of the commissioners to step up, speak up, lead, help reverse the Riverbend shuttering mistake, and earn back the trust of the people. What looks to be coming for part of Riverbend, at least part of Riverbend, is that it'll be sold off for luxury houses on the river because the course is just too hilly for any other use. Hopefully, that's not the reason. What we don't need are any more airport studies that have to be paid for by another city department because the airport has never had the money to take care of itself. You only have to read FAA Guideline 5190 to know your FAA condoned options and not spend our money again for what could just be someone's cover.
Thank you. Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor. City question, Travis Sargent, 406 North Beach Street. Just want to say thank you to leisure service. I just love the T-ball fields, and those fields, I don't know if everyone's been there, but are amazing. And then on Friday night, my family and I went to movie on the Halifax, which was amazing. Once again, leisure service, it's amazing. And then we woke up Saturday morning and went to the fishing tournament. Mr. Leary provided wonderful hot dogs and is a great community partner. On a different note, is the affluent water. With that coming up, you know, being, Ormond roughly being able to pump 1.6 million gallons a day, which we all know that some days we don't pump any, some days we may. Maybe we can use Avalon Park coming as a, look at a positive to Avalon Park, and maybe we can pump some of this water west. We're already going to run water lines out that way. Why not run affluent water lines out that way and encourage them to use this water for their watering of lawns and of such? And if not, maybe we can also, or in addition to, maybe we can pump it out to Riverbend Golf Course. There's going to be, I think that gentleman just said, 142 acres. On an average day, golf course pumps about 300 gallon, 300,000 gallons of water per day, so maybe that would be an option as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? These are the minutes from September 22nd, 2021, regular city commissioning.
I move approval of the minutes from September 22nd, 2021.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The consent agenda, does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull Item C and Item F.
And I'd like to hear from anybody else. Commissioner Kent?
Yes, Items B, D, and F.
B, D. Now, I'm going to pull A. A, B, C, D, F, anybody? Do I hear E? Are we good? Just need a motion to approve 7E.
I'll move the consent agenda with all items excluded except for Item E.
Perfect.
I'll second that motion.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 7A.
Resolution Number 2021-158, a resolution authorizing execution of a community development block grant subrecipient agreement for fiscal year 2021-2022 between the city and the county of Alusha and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2021-158, read by title only.
Thank you, and need a motion?
Submove.
In a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded for discussion. I'll start with this one. I'm a no vote on 7A. $15,599, almost $16,000 for a door, one door, and no supporting documentation as to why or what's involved. I mean, I know it's an ADA door, so it probably has to open automatically, so it has to have some electricity. But when I look online, a door that is ADA compliant should run about $5,000, and $16,000 is just too much. And I know it's CBPG money. Doesn't come directly out of every Ormond Beach taxpayer's pocket, but not having any additional information to give me some comfort level as to why the exorbitant amount for one door at a housing authority office, I'm a no vote on that, so. Anyone else wish to comment? If not, we'll call the.
I could ask a question. Can we pull that out and approve absent the public facilities expenditure?
This was a part of the annual, I'm sorry, the Red Moisea Grant Coordinator, sorry. This was a part of the annual plan back in July that was approved, and the housing authority came to the board at the public hearing and asked for this ADA door. Yes, it will be an automatic opening door, and it will have a male slot. They had asked many, I don't know how many, but quite a number of door vendors for quotes. They got one quote, and this is a preliminary quote from Orlando. So when they get into that process, no, it may very well not be $16,000, but that was the only number that the board had to go with at the time. So we can try to make, take that number lower. It doesn't actually have to be that, but at the time, that was the only quote that they had received after trying numerous vendors.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know who they called. I know people in the door and hardware business. I mean, when I was in college, I installed doors. An expensive door was 600 bucks or 700 bucks, and then maybe a couple thousand to add the hardware that makes it ADA, and maybe a couple thousand to run the electricity to make sure that that works. You're still around $5,000, $6,000, but I'm just, I'm turning my nose up at that number. Obviously, the commission can still vote for that, and that's fine, but I just don't have a comfort level in the spending of public money that would justify $16,000 being acceptable for, for an ADA door. So that's where I'm, I'm at on 7A. And it didn't sound like it could be pulled out, Commissioner. I didn't hear a direct answer to your question, but absent any further direction on that.
Mr. Mayor, we can go back to the housing authority. They, they submit that to the board as a grant request, and that's how it's honored. So we, we can go back and pull that, you can pull that tonight, and we can go back and see if we can't get additional details. We don't do the work for them. That's the information that they submit to the board.
Okay.
So feel free to.
Well, and nobody else may have a problem with it. If I'm, if I'm the only one, I mean, if somebody wants to pull the whole thing, would that be the way to do it and send it back for more information, or?
I think there's other items in there. I mean, I think it's not just the door. So you could pull just the door and then approve the balance of that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I can tell you right now, if the door's not pulled, I'm a no on all of it tonight as well. So Ms. Shanahan, did I hear you correctly? The door can be pulled?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend to pull the $16,000 door out of this agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now, if you would, call the vote on the underlying motion as amended, 7A.
Commissioner Persis?
Okay, this is.
So this is 7A minus the door.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now, if you would, call the vote on the underlying motion as amended, 7A.
Commissioner Persis?
Okay, this is.
So this is 7A minus the door.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Thank you, and we move to 7B.
Resolution Number 2021-159, a resolution authorizing execution of a service agreement between the city and the Ormond Memorial Art Museum, Inc., authorizing the expenditure of funding and settling, setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2021-159, read by title only.
And Commissioner Kent, I think we should.
Yes. I sent out one of the motions, a second before we talked about it.
We do.
Move of approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Commissioner Kent?
Ms. Shanahan, I hate to fill you on the spot like this. Do you happen to know, and if you don't, it's okay, when the last time we gave an increase to the Ormond Memorial Art Museum?
It's been many years. 5,000, when?
I think it was 2016?
2016.
So five years ago. So let me preface, my comments with Susan Richmond is in here. Tons of respect to you. I love those gardens. Those of you that know me know that I grew up on that beachside and I played in those gardens. I have great memories leaving Osceola Elementary and playing hide-and-seek with my brothers and sisters and friends in those gardens. Sorry, Mom, if you're listening, I had my first kiss in those gardens. That being said, I love what they're doing over there. I love how the city has been a partner with the Ormond Memorial Art Museum, and this is a great thing for our community. I have been struggling ever since I read this agenda with a 50% increase, and we're going from $48,000 a year to $72,000 a year because they're going to have more square footage, and they're going to be open a few more hours. And let me just say, I'm all for working an agreement for the grassy parking area with the city and allowing that to take place. It's in the same vein, Mr. Mayor, of what you were just talking about, the money. You know, we're all stewards of the taxpayer money, and, and someone could argue and say this is well worth it, that we need to do that. I think a 50% increase is a little steep, and I'm, I'm a no vote on this unless we pull the funding out.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I tend to agree as far as the amount, and not really knowing exactly where those dollars are going. Wasn't contacted by anybody before this got to us tonight, and then there's not really a lot of details other than some vague suggestions. And of course, they do a lot of great work.
They do.
There. They're expanding. I think we've done some street scape improvements and some wire moving.
Absolutely.
Things that are very expensive to help them along in that process. But I just worry, if we're giving them a 50% increase, then what do we do for the historical society? What do we do for Ormond Main Street? What do we do for the Chamber of Commerce? What do we do for each other organization that comes along and, and asks for an increase? Are we treating everybody fairly? And that was my, that was my concern with it, so. Deputy Mayor Persis?
Yeah. I, I just want to say, and I understand, I understand those concerns. I have a firsthand knowledge. I'm friends with a lot of people on the committee for this project, and I know that they have put tons of hours, they have worked hard, they have gotten money from the community in, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's not like they're just asking for money just to, you know, get by. I think they, they've put up their money too. You know, it's like they should put up, if we're going to give something, they need to give something. It's kind of the fair thing. And I think this is going to be a total gem at the corner there, and, and our city is going to have a rooftop kind of area, bar area. It's, it's going to be just absolutely fabulous. And so I guess I look at the 72,000 as, you know, yeah, that's a lot, that's a lot of money, but it's not going to be any kind of recurring expense. It's not going to happen again. I, I think there's other projects I would vote money for, for the Performing Arts Center, for any of those other places. I think, I think in order to make our city great and make it continue to look as good as it is, we've got to, we've got to pay a little bit. You know, you kind of get what you pay for, and I think it's something very, very important for our city, and there's just a lot of people that have put their heart and soul into this, and it would just be a tragedy to not, not see it, you know, see it look like it should look. And, and I, I was hoping maybe, Susan, can you explain maybe some of the things that are going into it? I mean, I know you probably could. Would you all mind if she came up?
Let's finish our discussion.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Commissioner Littleton, did you have anything?
Sure, I'll just say, I believe it's justified. I think we're getting way more than 50% of services from the new facility, so that's what I think.
Commissioner Selby, anything?
Yeah, I, I can support the increase.
And Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, I was just going to say, because I heard Commissioner Persis mention, you know, it's a one-time thing. I don't think this is a one-time thing. This is the annual agreement. This is going to be, until we ever change it again. This is the increase, $24,000. Am I correct in that, Ms. Shanahan? Yeah, this isn't a one-time deal, taxpayers of Ormond Beach. This is a, here's your new agreement, and as the mayor said, some vague information. And let me preface, let me back up for a moment. I told you all I love those gardens, and I love what they're doing. Their executive director is amazing. That's not what this is about. This is about, it's too much, it's not the right time, and this isn't a, this is not a one-time $24,000. This is 24,000 every year until they come back and ask for more.
And that was my concern as well. When I heard Deputy Mayor Persis say it was a one-time thing, I could probably go along with it if that was the case.
Me too.
I don't know if we can word it that way, so it is a one-time situation, but I got the impression that once it's set at that level, then it's only. the impression that once it's set at that level, then it's only going to go up from there. And, you know, when I looked over the financials that were in the report, it looked like they were thirty thousand or so short last year, so this will make up for that, I guess. And then with the improvements they're doing, which are wonderful, they're going to have hopefully some dollars coming in on naming rights. They're going to be doing more weddings and events and things like that, hopefully generating more revenue, which is all wonderful. And they do touch people's lives. I love the work that they do with veterans, but it's just fifty percent seemed like a lot, and I was worried whether we were being fair to everybody. That's my concern with it. And we're spending, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars on infrastructure to get those wires down on Halifax to help improve the overall project. So it's not like we're not contributing, it's just a question of, of how much. I think that was, that was the issue. Commissioner Kent?
And Mayor, we've been, and, and they will continue to be, a great partner with the museum. But if my memory is right, we just changed the, the lease agreement from, instead of every year, is it fifty years or ninety-nine years now? Something like that, because in fifty years, I'm going to be close to ninety-nine, something like that, so.
[laughing]
Is fifty? So, yeah, we went from a one-year agreement. So I'm just telling you all, Orman residents, we've been great friends and had a great partnership, and even if this doesn't go through, we're going to continue to be great friends and have a great partnership. But I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I heard three people say they were in support of it, but one said because it was a one-time deal, so maybe that changes things.
Well, and, so Joyce, it'll come back each year for approval, whatever the amount is, and it could go down next year? Is that correct?
It's not going to happen. It hasn't in the past. You know, maybe as a compromise position, I think some of the expenses were indicated to be for insurance on the new building and those type of expenses. I don't know what those are, but that new building won't really be operational until probably February or March of next year, so that's maybe six months worth of it. How about if we can maybe table this, and I can go back and talk to Ms. Richmond in some detail, if there's any interest in that?
I like that idea, Mr. Mayor.
I would be opposed to that. I'm not interested in tabling it. I think we have three votes, and I think we should go ahead and vote.
Okay. Unless there's a motion to table and a second and three votes for that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a motion to table for a period of up to six months, so we can come back and get some better information on what the additional fifty percent, twenty-four thousand dollar increase for our taxpayers is going to be.
And I'd be in favor of that, so I can second that. Any other discussion? Please call.
I just, I just want to say, if I said something that was false, I certainly didn't mean to. I, I thought it was a one-time thing, and, and if it's not, it's not. So I, I apologize for making that comment.
Not a problem.
I just want to clarify, we're voting on the, to table right now.
Please call the-
Commissioner Littleton?
No.
Commissioner Selby?
No.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
No.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, thank you, Susan. And now, unless there's any other discussion, we'll call the, call the vote on seven B.
Commissioner Shelby, Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
No.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
No. And we move to seven C.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty, a resolution authorizing the execution of a work authorization with GAI Consultants, Inc., to conduct and provide to the city a conceptual planning and land use study of the airport property formerly leased for non-aeronautical purposes as a golf course, authorizing payment therefor and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty, read by title only.
Mayor, I'll move resolution twenty twenty-one dash one sixty.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I guess I, I actually, earlier today, I spoke with Mr. Lichtleiter, the airport manager, about the, about the proposal from GAI, and he answered some of my questions, but I thought it would be good to, you, some of you all may have had similar questions and/or people from the public may have had some questions. So I, I guess mostly I'll propose these in the, in the way of questions, and then the appropriate staff person can answer them. So there are a couple of references in GAI's proposal to the city purchasing or acquiring property, and there's also references in Area One. Well, I, I probably ought to just take them one at a time rather than rattle on a whole bunch of questions. So could you address those references to purchasing property, acquiring property? This is all property the city already owns, so, you know, could you help us understand that a little better?
Sure. Brian Rodomiro, Economic Development Director, City of Orman Beach. As we know, the property that was formerly used as the Riverbend Golf Course is airport property, and as, as such, you know, the priority, primary priority is, of an obligation of the airport is to maintain the property for aeronautical purposes, when there are non-aeronautical purposes available to, to lease for that purpose. And then there are federal grant assurances that run with the land, so when there are properties, or when there are portions of the land for non-aeronautical use, those, those users would need to lease the land, or if there are portions of airport property that are no longer, if the FAA releases those lands, then this, the airport sponsor is obligated to, to compensate the airport for releasing those lands.
Just like we do for all road sports complexes, we pay a lease back to the airport fund for the use of those properties.
So I'm sorry, are you saying that, that the city will have to pay rent to the airport fund for the closed golf course? Did you say that, or would that, would that only be if we opened the golf course?
For, for any non-aeronautical or aeronautical use, a lease payments would have to be made. So if the city were to utilize Riverbend Golf Course land for passive recreation or recreational uses, they would, the city would pay a lease to the airport fund in order to use the land.
So, and, and just for, I'm not, like, I'm not trying to pin, I mean, I'm not trying to be, I just want to make sure I understand this. So are we, are we in that situation right now? Okay, so right now, when it's just laying fallow, there's no, no rent due? Okay, all right. But that, you didn't really address, there's several references to acquisition or purchasing.
You can purchase instead of lease.
Right. If, if, if airport property, the Airport Business Park is an excellent example. The, the Airport Business Park used to be part of the airport. It was deemed, as I believe, by the FAA as not essential to the operations of the airport, and therefore was identified as able to be released by the FAA. And so as a result of that, the city, the, the land was released, and the city acquired the property and then utilized it to turn it into an industrial park.
Okay, so for, just for the way, I'm sure government has different terminology, but I would call that a deed restriction. In other words, when the FAA quitclaim deeded the property to the city, it probably had a deed restriction on it. I call it a deed restriction. It had to be used for aeronautical purposes, right?
That's correct.
So in, in the case of the business park, when, what we purchased was the removal of the deed restriction, because we already owned the fee simple interest in the land, it just was encumbered with a restriction. I mean, is that a, is that a reasonable way for a layman to kind of understand it?
In, in, in one respect, however, as, as identified by the FAA, the, the airport sponsor needs to be fairly compensated for the release of that land at far, at fair market value.
Right, right. But that, but that's always the case. I mean, anything that we do, whether, even though we're dealing with ourselves effectively, we, it has to be fair market value. Okay. All right, so that's the, now, there's a couple of references to, I'm just, you know, the city has decided to reserve Area One for future development. I just want to, that's Area One is, for anybody who knows the golf course, that holds four through nine, or the, the land that is east of Airport Road up to the Timoca River. And I just want to, I just want to be clear in what my position is and what I believe the city commission's position is, is that there is zero intent to ever have that land developed for commercial and/or residential purposes. Is that correct? I mean, is anybody-
Correct.
That was my understanding of the direction we gave. Is that, I mean, I'm just, I just want to make sure we're all in agreement on that. And I think that, I, I, I think the wording in this proposal from GAI is, it potentially is a little misleading. It might give somebody the impression that we are thinking about having that land either commercially or residentially developed, and that is not the case, is it?
It is not the case. I'll point out on page two, under task two, Area One Development, it says that GAI will evaluate the area for passive recreation and preservation.
And then I just, the, the last question was about, so if we, if we, if the land was preserved, in other words, just nothing was, you know, not on all of it, because I think the parcel two, or section two, which is the clubhouse, the driving range, holes one through three, the cart barn, and the maintenance facility, that's basically what is parcel two. I view that, and it appears the consultant does, and I think the commission does, as the land that is most likely to be developed for aeronautical purposes most quickly. It's right there at the entrance of the airport, it's adjoining the runways, it's, you know, it's, it has good frontage on Airport Road. But if, if, say, parcel one, the piece along the river, or parcel three, which is up north pretty mostly along Bear Creek, and then runs out to the airport sports complex, if that was just left fallow, if, if nothing was done on there, would the city be required to pay rent to the airport?
Yes. My understanding is that there would have to be some revenue generation, as that is the primary obligation of the airport, to generate revenue, to implement the improvement programs that go on at the airport.
Okay, but before a golf course was built there, and, you know, and I know I'm catching you without, were we paying rent to the, was the city paying rent to the airport on vacant land around the airport when nothing was on it?
No, we were not.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if, if we really would, because I don't want to put, I mean, I hope we would not be in a situation where we have to pay rent on land that were, that's not being used, it's not being put to a productive use, it's just sitting there as preservation land.
I think as long as there's not an intent with that being vacant, I mean, I think if it's vacant until something comes up, then that's different than intentionally leaving it vacant, likely with presenting for the area along the river.
Right. Okay, good, great. That's a very good distinction. I think you're, you're probably right. Okay, that, that really, that really concludes my comments on this. However, I do want to make one other comment that is related, but it's slightly off topic. It's my understanding that the city pays approximately sixty thousand dollars a year to the airport for the airport sports complex lease, correct? Okay. And we've been doing that for thirty years? I'm, I've been here thirty-eight years, and my kids were, so it wasn't sixty grand thirty-eight years ago, but it is reevaluated, I think, every five years. That's a lot of rent the city has paid. We should really, in my opinion, we should look at buying out that, that, I call it a deed restriction, and owning that so we don't have to continue to pay rent on the sports complex property, even though we're paying it to the airport, we're sort of paying it to ourselves, but not really. The airport is its own enterprise fund. So we would pay that one time, we would buy that right one time and then never have to pay rent again. We already own the land.
But that would go directly to the airport fund.
It would, right. Which would also, by the way, help with the airport's, you know, current financial situation, that it owes the general funds of money. You know, so, anyway, that's, that's the end of my comments. I, I support this, I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Selby, it's the strangest fee simple property I've ever seen in my life. I took property law in Louisiana. Professor Rabelais was an amazing teacher. They have some strange property laws in Louisiana, but I always thought fee simple meant you owned it, and you could do what you wanted with it, you know? And this is the most encumbered, federal bureaucracy, red tape, piece of property that I've ever seen, and that's just the environment that we have to work in. I think, looking at purchasing it, the sports field section of it would be a good idea. I think you're right, Area One is going to be a, a park. I mean, we already know what we want that to be, whether it's frisbee golf or walking trails along the beautiful Timoca River, a continuation of the amazing bike path that, that our residents and others built out there. Nobody sees development on that of any kind, and it's not the intent of the commission to, to develop that commercial or residential. I think it's what our residents are clamoring for in the park survey is more open spaces and trails and things of that nature, and this is the perfect place to allow that to happen. I appreciate the fact that there's a, a strong public engagement section of this, task number seven, and I hope we, they take full advantage of that, getting as much input as possible. Area Two, adjacent to the airport, which is where the, the clubhouse is and the, the driving range, those kind of things, I would almost be interested, and I may be the only one, in having this company, CSG, look at possibly putting in a, a nine-hole golf course using Area Two and parts of Area Three closest to Bear Creek. And the reason I say that is, I hate the fact that we don't have a public golf course in our city, and I know there's a strong contingent of our residents that would like that. I think you could have a driving range, you could have a clubhouse, you could have a nine-hole course. Wouldn't be an eighteen-hole course, it's not perfect, but it'd be better than nothing. And the studies I've been reading indicate that, that nine-hole courses and par-three courses are more popular these days, because people don't have time to play eighteen holes of golf when they go play. And if they do have that kind of time, they can play the course twice and do eighteen, but it would still be an opportunity to provide that kind of amenity, meet all our other needs, and something that I think at least should be looked at. It doesn't have to happen, but I think it would be good to look at that, and so that's, that's where I am on that. I was a little concerned with the way this proposal read, that it just had set absolute ideas of what each area was going to be used for, and so I'd rather see a little more open-mindedness, a little more ability to listen to what our residents want and are asking for, and then work that into the proposals that are ultimately brought back to us in that report. So that's where I'm at, and I'm going to support it tonight, and I don't know if anybody else has anything. Commissioner Kent?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I, too, am going to support it. I would agree, we want to look at possibly just paying off the sports complex, so we don't make that, I agree with Commissioner Selby, sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but I just remind the audience, majority of this commission, minus the mayor and myself, just agreed to spend seventy-two thousand dollars a year to the Orman Memorial Art Museum, so I guess that's a whole lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? If not, please call the vote on seven C.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, thank you, Susan, and now we go to seven D.
This is a disposition item titled intent to bid gazebo replacement Central Park Two.
I forget who pulled this one.
It was, it was me. I assume if you wanted a, a motion to talk about it first, Mayor.
Let's have a motion on seven D.
I have approval-
I move approval on Two, for Seven B. D?
Second motion.
Moved and seconded. Commissioner Kent?
Yep, so it's a common theme, and same vein for me tonight, and it deals with money. And I'll just say, I, the gazebo needs to be replaced, I'm all for it. This is 18 feet wide, and it's $60,000. And I have to say, just like there was an issue with a $16,000 door, I have an issue with a $60,000 gazebo. If it was $20,000, I could stomach it, if it was $30,000, I could even handle it, but $60,000 for an outdoor gazebo, I, I just cannot support that amount tonight, and that's why I pulled it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Sean, did you want to address it?
I can, you know, this is, this is the second of the gazebos, those gazebos have gone back 30 years, and, and so we do, you know, I think that we all agree, those gazebos are part of Central Park, we're looking to replace them. We're looking at numbers that we know, because these are very similar, this can be very similar, it's going to be identical to the previous one that was done about a year, year and a half ago, so we've got a good basis of what it costs to build a outdoor gazebo of that nature, that's going to stand up to the, the weather, I don't know that this makes our argument, or makes, it makes any other argument, quickly, that's about 175 square feet, $320, $330 a square foot is, is, is about what it amounts to here, so that probably doesn't make my argument, but just to kind of give you all the facts, where we're at, and I think that it's, you know, we don't want to put something that's substandard, and that's why we're putting something of this nature.
And Ms. Finley, don't take this the wrong way, you know I'm a big fan, you're excellent at what you do, and I appreciate the honesty that you just gave me, but I want a gazebo, we need to have a gazebo, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, I'm arguing the $60,000, there's not a bathroom in this, everybody, there's not even a window, okay? This is a gazebo, sort of like, when I go, and I don't anymore, I do it myself, you go to get my truck detailed, and they charge you more, because it's a big vehicle, hold on, timeout, half the darn thing's not there. It's not an SUV, half of it, you don't even have to wash or wax, what do you mean, it's more money, it should be less money. This should not be more money, because we've got to take care of it, you know, as far as holding up for the weather. I think there are many hungry contractors that could do this for a much reduced price. And, and that's what it was for me, like I said, Mr. Mayor and Commission, the things that I was pulling tonight, except for F, were all in the same vein of, of financial tightening down from this, Commissioner. Thanks. I'm, I'm a no if, if it stays the same.
Thank you, Commissioner. Nope, and it's, it's a little bit of a theme tonight, and spoiler alert, it is a theme on F for me, although I think I've overcome it, but, and Sean, you did a great job, Commissioner Kent makes a passionate argument, he's not, and he told you, he's not yelling at you, it's just the environment that we live in, and with the other one, I think I was preconditioned to kind of expect this, it's almost like they call Stockholm Syndrome, where the captives start to develop a psychological bond with their captors when it comes to these expensive projects, and it's frustrating for all of us, but, did you want to say one more?
The only thing I wanted to remind you, this is just the disposition item, this is just the, the request to put it out to bid, we have not received any bids yet, so you will have an opportunity, once we do receive bids, whether you want, whether you want to accept those bids or not.
Ah ha, but when you put out this amount of money, let me tell you what the bid's going to come in at, $59,995. You know, that's just how this works, we know, we know how this works, and the contractors know how it works, and they're paying attention, because you know what, they're smart, they're smart.
Anyone else? Please call the vote on Seven D.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
No.
Mayor Partington?
And yes, and we'll move to Seven F.
This is a disposition item titled Granada Boulevard Streetscape Sidewalk Banding Repair.
Submove for discussion?
Submove for discussion?
Second.
Seconded? And I can't remember who pulled it, was it Commissioner Selby first?
I didn't, I didn't, Mayor, thank you. So the, we've been asked, the staff has asked us for some guidance on this, and we actually had, I'm just making a fourth note, so the staff wanted to, wanted us to endorse the color selection, which I think the preferred color selection is integral colored concrete Etruscan tile. Is that correct, did I get that right?
Etruscan tile.
Etruscan tile, okay, and then the second question, you know, so the first question is, do we, are we comfortable with that color selection? The second question is, is, do we want to give this contract to Weigel Construction, AM Weigel, or do we want to competitively bid it? And the, the number is $2,400,000, that's the anticipated cost of the project. And then the, the third question is, oh, so this is, it's not in the write-up, but this is something that came out of an email that we were all copied on, from a citizen regarding existing projects that are, that have an active building permit, that are, that, according to that email, and I didn't verify this with staff, but I suspect it is the case, that if they're on, in an area where, that our code requires the, the owner of the property to restore the sidewalk to its pre-construction condition, and obviously, that would mean putting pavers back in, you know, just a few months before the pavers are going to be taken out, and we're going to replace it with integral colored concrete Etruscan tile, right? And so, my recommendation on that is that we exempt anybody who has an active building permit. If you have an active building permit, you're not required to put the pavers in, because within a few months, that's all going to get taken out anyway, why waste the money? And then the fourth thing, I just want to make sure, this is just my, but based on our conversation with, in our transportation workshop, if DOT on East Granada is going to potentially widen sidewalks, that could change the design of where the, where the decorative concrete would be, and I just want to make sure that we, you know, we don't do that twice, or, you know, waste money doing that.
If I can respond to the last one?
Sure.
I don't believe it's DOT's intent to widen the sidewalks, because they're our responsibility. They were talking about the curb, so I think there's a timing consideration there, and Stephen can probably speak to that in more detail.
Good evening, Stevens Record Plan Director. So, the, the last item, the, the expansion would be through bulbouts, so as they did on this section of Granada, they didn't expand the sidewalks, they did those little areas where they're putting landscaping, so that's how they would narrow the, the lanes, so it wouldn't have any impact to the existing sidewalks that are there today.
That, that isn't really quite what they said, because they talked about moving the curb out, not bulbouts, but, and when I brought this topic up, they kind of said, yeah, it's a good thing, we need to coordinate with you, so, I'll trust you, I mean, you know, you know it better than me, you understand my concern?
We do.
Okay. So I might as well tell you where I stand on these topics, I'm, I'm definitely okay with the color, Etruscan tile, I think the project should definitely be bid out, it's a $2 million project, even a 5% savings could be $100,000. The, in round numbers, the CRA generates about $1 million a year, that's 10% of the annual budget that is, that potentially could be saved through a competitive bid process. And, and of course, I do support an exception for anybody with an active building permit, so that they are not going to be required to replace, you know, restore the sidewalk back to its original condition, I guess all they would need to do is just pour concrete if they, if they pull, if you'll notice in, I noticed today, in front of the, the barbecue restaurant, all of the pavers are out of the sidewalk, and so all that really would need to be done is that concrete be poured in there, so it's a smooth surface, you know, just so it's a safe, smooth surface, in my opinion.
All right. And I'll go, and then we'll talk to everybody as well, but this has been a frustrating project for me to watch, and at first, I don't think I really understood it, I thought it was like a complete replacement of the sidewalks, and it's not, it's strictly streetscape banding, so those little strips that you see, that's what's being replaced, obviously, if there's some damaged sidewalk along the way, or it is damaged during the process, those parts will be repaired, but there's really no concrete sidewalks that are included as part of this, it's just the banding. Stephen, could you go from the Etruscan back to the other page? I was out last night, in the evening, staring at the sidewalk, I think people wondered what I was doing as they drove by, but luckily, we had, staff was kind enough to provide these samples for us, out there, right across, behind the chamber, across from the observer building, the old bank building, kind of across catty corner to the police department. And I'm not a big fan of the rust-colored, the Etruscan, the burnt red, the rust fields, definitely don't like the clay pavers at all, I think we have to go with the, the poured concrete, with the added shell mixture, but I like the Mesa beige, and I'll, I'll tell you why, because I think it looks the most like the concrete wall that's in front of the Ormond Beach Elementary, I think it looks the most like the old firehouse that Salty Church is in right now, and I also think it looks the most like what we have at Andy Romano Park, even though it's not close to Andy Romano Park, it pulls that in and gives our city that, that unified look. The other thing is, I think it'll wear well, I also think, when you look at the concrete, there were some bigger pictures, and I looked at it last night, the lighter Mesa beige doesn't show the imperfections in the concrete as much as the darker colors did, and, and I like that as well, so maybe it wouldn't have to be power sprayed as much, and so, we, they drive staff crazy being all over the place, or we may not, but on Mesa beige, I'm okay with Weigel, like I said, it's Stockholm Syndrome, I hate the fact that this costs 2.3 million or 2.4 million dollars, but Weigel can get it done in six months, and if we do the bid process, it could be a year to a year and a half, and with the cost of materials in the construction industry right now, any day you waste is, is an additional expense, and Weigel's done great work for us before, so I have a good comfort level with them, and that's why I'm okay going with, with Weigel. And then I hope the rest of the commission will agree to do the add-ons, I mean, this whole thing comes from an agreement back in 1991, where we're required to do this maintenance, we agreed to that, we were bound, I guess, by a prior commission in 91, in agreement with, with DOT, 30 some years later, we've dragged out as long as humanly possible, doing the maintenance, but now we're doing it, and the cost is, is 2.3 million, but I just think, if we're doing it, and we want it to make our downtown look great, and this covers Zone Two, Zone Four as well, particularly west of, of US One, where some of the clay pavers are in the absolute worst shape, but I think we should spend the $58,000 for Alternate One, and remove the pavers, and install the decorative concrete banding along the cross streets, that's up on John Anderson, and then Alternate Two is an additional 222,503, and that covers the concrete banding along cross streets where pavers continue from Granada Boulevard, so Bovard, Washington, Atlantic Avenue, the birthplace of Speed Park frontage, the Royal Floridian frontage, and Walgreens frontage. If we're trying to make our city look great, we're already doing the work anyway, let's just do the whole thing with those additional add-ons. And then, Stephen, Alternate Three, I don't think I'm in favor of, that would be just putting in standard 3,000 PSI gray concrete with no shell, in the section from Orchard to US One, is that right?
Correct, as we were looking at different alternatives, one of the cost savings was, was to use the, the gray concrete, as you can see, it wasn't a huge savings, so the, the first two items would do all your side streets, and your, your banding within the parks.
Okay, so that, that would be a deduct of 51,000 and change, but I'm not in favor of that, but I do think we should do the other two while we're doing everything else. Hasn't been done in quite a long time, it obviously needs to be done, it's a safety issue, there's liability involved that could far exceed the cost of this, and I, I get that, studies have shown that, so, for all those reasons, that's, that's where I'm at.
Who wants to go next? Commissioner Kent?
Yes. So I walked this area of our city this afternoon with Ms. Shanahan and Mr. Finley, and, right out of the gate, because looking at these pictures, and, and by the way, Joyce, thank you so much for having some examples down on the ground, so we could look at them, very powerful. Because looking at the pictures, I am, I did not like Option Five. Once I got there, Option Five was actually like my third favorite, once I was there, the, the Etruscan tile, which is the one that I think Main Street recommended, and that's a recommendation for tonight, but the very first one that I really liked as soon as I got out, was the Mesa beige. It's, it's the first one, I mentioned it to Ms. Shanahan, and I said, the only, the only issue with it is, it gets a little bit lost with the concrete, is what I was thinking. So then, I really went to Option Three, which was the Autumn Beveled Edge Clay Paver, and I thought, you know what, the commission is not going to like this, because it's very similar to what we had, and when you look at what we have right now, it's faded, it almost looks like Mesa beige, because it's so faded, and it's, it's, you know, falling apart in areas, you know, it, it just has, has outlived its life. So my number one is Mesa beige, my number two, if, if anybody out there, you know, something else, is the Autumn Beveled Edge Clay Paver. I'm fine with the add-ons, and I think there's, there's something to be said about, you know, using our, our contractor and getting the job done right away, but this is $2 million, and for me, with $2 million, I think we have to go out to bid, I just think it's the, it's the prudent thing to do, you know, we, we, we may, we may save some money, and then again, we may not. Mayor, we've been down this road before, and the numbers come in, and it's not, it's not so good for us, but I think at the very least, you know, when, when my, when my bosses, the residents of Zone Two, ask me questions, I like to have good answers for them, and when someone asks me, wait a minute, you know, or actually says to me, you awarded a two-plus million dollar contract, you didn't go out to bid for that, you know, your city manager's got to come to you for anything over $25,000, but you're going to award 2 million? I, I'm, I'm more comfortable putting that out for the process, I'm okay with the add-ons, and I like Mesa beige. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, I just want to say that I'm great with the add-ons, and I am, actually, I agree with Mayor Partington, I'm great with Weigel, I think he's done great jobs, great work in our city, and something like this, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see it get done, I think people are anxious, I know Main Street's waited a long time for this to happen and get going, so I'm, I'm okay with that, and as far as the color tones, I'm fine with the Etruscan color or the Mesa beige, I like both of them, I think the Etruscan is a little brighter, but either one, I would, I can live with.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. I prefer Option Five, the Etruscan tile, not only is it my personal favorite, but I believe it fits the color scheme that our Main Street master plan study came up with on what our downtown should look like, so that's what I, where I would go with there. Oh, I'm okay with the add-ons, and I'm tough on whether or not to bid this out, because I would like to see it done quickly, but quite frankly, they made great points on to bid it out, oh, I, I still haven't decided yet, to be quite honest. Oh, I still haven't decided yet, to be quite honest. If we don't bid it out, then I'm okay with having an exception for those with an active permit, but if we bid it out, I don't want sidewalks to be, you know, not there for, you know, a year, year and a half. You know what I mean? It could definitely be a safety issue, and cosmetically.
Can I just jump in?
Sure.
Commissioner Littleton, what I'm proposing on the exception would be if you, and let me just use the example in front of the barbecue restaurant, because they, what they did was, they tore out all of the sidewalk from Little Ridgewood West to what was the old dry cleaner, and they poured new sidewalk there, and they left the gaps where the pavers used to be so that they could restore that. And so, and because I talked to their representative today, and she told me that, you know, "Look, it seems kind of silly that we would have to spend money to put pavers down, because that's what was there before, when the city's going to come back in in six months or so, and pull that out and put the whatever in there." And I agree with that. So what I said was, "Well, what if you just put concrete in there in the slot, okay?" So now, though, it's a sidewalk. It's a walkable sidewalk. It's safe. Right now, what they have in there is compressed dirt, you know, so it is a reasonably safe surface. So in other words, there would not be an unwalkable sidewalk. There would be a walkable sidewalk, but it wouldn't be people wasting money, you know, putting in pavers that are, in a very short while, going to get torn out.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Please do.
So the construction manager is a unique process, and this is a very unique project. So the almost nine miles of banding repair, and the integral shell has very limited number of contractors who can do this style of work that we're looking for, and that's why we had the mockups done, to ensure that it could be done. The construction manager does bid the project, so just like the city bids it, he gets bids, and we can have him produce those bids. So they're bidding the same way as the city would bid it. The concern is, the city bids it, is there are very limited contractors that are going to meet these criteria. We're going to want someone with a lot of experience. We're going to want somebody who has done this in multiple places. The contractor that AM Weigel has has done this multiple times. He's done it at Disney. They've done it at multiple locations. So because this is a unique project, there's not a bid specification book right now. Once you do a bid, you're going to have to go out and tell them exactly where you want the panels replaced, exactly the linear frontage, how exactly you want to do, so that way everyone's bidding on the same playfield. With the construction manager, there is flexibility, and if there are cost savings, it comes back to the city rather than, if you bid, back to the contractor. So it provides a level of flexibility using a construction manager, that this isn't a 200-square-foot building that we know the exact specifications. There's going to be a lot of design as you go along. So those are just some thoughts that staff wanted to provide as you weigh this option.
Deputy Mayor Persis, the question was about the process, and you had indicated you were okay with Weigel, and
Yes.
Mr. Spraker was just explaining some of the benefits to using Weigel, so you didn't miss too much. Anyone else?
I guess I should say I'm okay with keeping AM Weigel.
Okay. So I've got three for Weigel, two to bid. I've got two and a half for Mesa beige and two and a half for Etruscan tile. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we can get a third for the Mesa beige, then I'm good with Weigel.
I'm good with Mesa beige.
All right. I just need a motion for Mesa beige and Weigel, and the add-ons.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't, what are we, what is the motion?
No problem. It's a motion for the Mesa beige, Weigel, and the add-ons 1 and 2, not the third. Not the third one. Any other discussion?
I mean, we've all commented, but you're kind of forcing me to vote no, because you're, and I'm not really, I don't really have a problem with the color, and I don't have a problem with the add-ons by lumping them all together. We've all sort of, pardon me? Yeah, I mean, maybe it would be better to take them separately, just so that, you know, I don't, because I'm pretty, the money matters a lot to me. The color doesn't matter that much, and...
Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw my motion, so that I can do it separately.
Second.
Second.
Perfect.
Would you like these one by one, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? So the first one, if you don't mind, I'll do, is the color, which is the motion to approve Mesa beige.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on Mesa beige?
The only comment I'll make is, and, you know, only because I just can't restrain myself, is that I prefer a darker color, because it'll get a little more contrast. I'm very concerned that the Mesa beige is very close to the color of just generic concrete, and I think the contrast is better, but I'm going to lose.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
No.
Commissioner Selby?
No.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now, a motion on Weigel.
Yep. So a motion to approve AM Weigel as the contractor.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
No.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now the...
Yep, the third one is a motion to approve add-ons number 1 and 2 only.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is alternate number 1 and alternate number 2 in the proposal from AM Weigel. Any further discussion on that? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now would be the appropriate time, although there's not much left, for any commissioner who wishes to comment on any consent agenda.
Well, Mayor, before we leave this, and this is maybe a question for the city attorney, but is there, do we have the power to, to, is it something, oh, you're going to the microphone, to create an exception? Yeah, it's okay. You may not have heard my question. So I guess my question relates back to the exception for the building owners or the property owners that are, have an active building permit. Do we have the ability to do that? I mean, it's sort of a modification of our building code.
Well, it really depends on whether or not it's a requirement by the code ordinances. I don't have the answer to that, but if it's your preference that that be done, essentially, it would operate as a waiver of that requirement. So if that's the direction that the commission would like to give staff, we'll find a way to make it happen.
Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, I was just going to say, to help speed that along, Commissioner Selby, that's reasonable. I think it's a common sense approach, and I agree with that. So that's two.
I didn't agree with it.
I'm not sure, I'm not following what you said.
Okay, so I'm proposing that there be a waiver of the requirement to restore the sidewalk in front of your property if you've torn it up, you know, if you've demoed it.
Active permit.
Yeah, if you have an active permit, until the, and that would, that waiver would exist until such time as the work is completed, the sidewalk renovations are completed.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so I'm going to make that in the form of a motion.
So moved and seconded. And then, Stephen, did you have any concerns about that?
So if the decision is to go with the Mesa beige, could we just allow the contractor to install that Mesa beige? We may make the timeframe of getting this in. Our intention is to bring this back to the commission in November and start the very first of January. So depending on how the pump house goes, we may be able to do them right away, or we could ask the contractor to do the Mesa beige. It's concrete, it just has the mix in it. So we'll find out what the price is. We're fine with you doing the exception, and if the fallback is the concrete, we'd be more than happy to do it. But I think as long as we're all agreed on the Mesa beige, because once the concrete's in, it's going to have to be taken back out, so there's, we're doing it twice. So we'd prefer to have them either install Mesa beige or wait till we come along.
Yeah, I understand. When you say "the contractor," do you mean
A dug pipe.
A pump house contractor?
Correct.
Or do you mean the contractor that the...
The contractor of the pump house.
Okay, I'm okay with that. I mean, that's, but you're the one who said that you got to use this super-duper special subcontractor that only
They would likely
He's the guy in the whole world that can do the work.
They would likely contract with them, just like they did on North Washington.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
So we think we can resolve it.
Very good. Anything else on that motion, other than the vote? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And does anybody have any additional comments on 7E? Great report, Joyce.
Just on the whole consent agenda?
On the whole thing, yes, sir.
I think it's the longest consent agenda item we've had in four years. Longest consent agenda in four years. And staff, I don't want you to think me pulling those items was any bad on your part. It was just, there's some touchy items on there that, you know, I think the residents appreciate. We all do our homework and take time to go over this stuff with a fine-tooth comb.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yep, I was hoping Claire didn't think we were pulling a trick-or-treat early on her for that. It's just one of those things, and it happens from time to time. All right, we'll move into our public hearings, and I'll open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read 8A.
Ordinance number 2021-35, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 3, General Regulations, Section 2-50, accessory uses of the Land Development Code to allow mobile food dispensing vehicles, food trucks, at single-family and multifamily developments with a residential clubhouse or community center. Repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting for an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-35, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
I'll move ordinance 2021-35.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2021-36, an ordinance amending Section 1-22, definitions of terms and words of Article 3, definitions and acronyms of Chapter 1, General Administration, amending Section 2-29, B-8, commercial zoning district of Article 2, District and General Regulations of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, and amending Section 2-57, criteria for review of special conditional and special exceptions of Article 4, conditional and special exceptions regulations of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, amending definitions and providing criteria to allow virtual golf centers, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-36, read by title only.
Thank you. I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item.
This is a Land Development Code amendment that amends three sections of our Land Development Code. The goal is to allow an indoor virtual golf center that could also provide beer and wine specifically to their users. It is a unique use that currently isn't allowed under our code. Talking to the business owner, staff felt that this was an appropriate use. They went to planning board, which they recommended unanimously, 6 to 0. Staff is also recommending approval, and I believe the business owner is here if there's any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? I don't have any cards. I just need a motion and a second for discussion.
I'll move ordinance 2021-36.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-161, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding Southern Mower Sales, Inc., located at 148 North Young Street, within the B-5 service commercial zoning district, to allow outdoor activity to include the permanent outdoor display and sales of merchandise, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-131, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our planning director again to speak on this item.
So, good evening. This is a request for a special exception for outdoor activities. Our Land Development Code allows outdoor activities in two methods. The first is as an accessory use, so businesses are allowed to do outdoor activities four times a year, 14 days. That is a staff approval. If they want to have any outdoor product display beyond that 56 days a year, they have to go through a special exception process. There is a new business who are doing the sales of lawn mowers, and they're seeking to allow lawn mowers on the frontage of their property. This is an exhibit that they included with their special exception request. The planning board did recommend approval, 6 to 0. There were no objections at the planning board, and the business owner is here if there are any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and second for discussion.
Mayor, I'll move Resolution 20-21-161.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And thank you for being here. We appreciate that. We'll close the public hearings and move on to discussion and direction items, starting with the city attorney evaluation. I do not have any cards. Just time for discussion, our comments from the commission, and then we'll need a motion and second to accept. Deputy Mayor Persis?
I move approval to accept the city attorney evaluation.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just...
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, I did this, Randy, and I didn't write any comments, and I think I had two sheets, and I turned in the wrong one, so I did have a nice comment written for you, so I didn't want you to think I just kind of left it out. I saw that, I went, "Oh, no, I think I gave the wrong sheet." But I think you know that, I think you're an amazing city attorney, and you're always just right there to answer questions quickly and accurately, and I love how you and Joyce work together and get along for the betterment of our city, and you just make our city great. So I just want to thank you for everything that you do for all of us.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kent?
Yes, so I, my comments are in here. The commission has seen them. If you looked at the agenda, you possibly read them as well, but I'm going to say them publicly, because they are that important to me, and I think to Mr. Hayes. Randy Hayes is a wonderful asset to the residents and city of Ormond Beach. We are fortunate to have such a competent and hard-working city attorney. Randy, keep up the great work. And if my math is right, I'm pretty sure it is, your 4.94 equates to a 98%, but not just a 98% on your report card, as an educator up here. And Commissioner Persis, I think you'll appreciate this too, but a 98.8, which rounded up, goes to a 99. So, listen, you are drama-free. You don't give us headaches, ever. You fight for our residents. You fight for your commission, and I could ask no more from a city attorney. And I could ask no more from a city attorney. We are so fortunate to have you. And working with you for the past eighteen years, you maybe don't realize what I've picked up from you and what I've learned along the way, but the way you handle yourself, your composure, and, you know, you are exactly what Ormond Beach needs in a city attorney, and you run a tight ship with your office. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
I was just saying, Mr. Hayes, you and your team are the cream of the crop, and keep up your outstanding work. And as you can see, I'm kind of running out of similes and metaphors to use to say that you're the best of the best. So, you know, it speaks for itself right there. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Best of the best and cream of the crop. That's pretty good, pretty good. I, Commissioner Selby, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I mean, happy to go after you, or whatever order you prefer. I think one of the, one of the things that really stands out for me is your institutional knowledge and your community knowledge, you know, because of your longstanding in the office, your love for our city is really a huge, huge benefit that we get the benefit of. So, thank you for your service, and thank you for keeping an eye out for us. I remember the, the, was it, was it, the taxes, deed, not deed in lieu of taxes?
Pilot agreement.
Pilot agreement, yeah. Payment, payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreement. And I had never, I've never heard of any of such a thing, and you brought that up, you smoked that out on those guys, that were going to do a project here, and just for the benefit of the audience, there were some developers who wanted to do a project here, and it was going to be a nonprofit, which meant that it was a, is a multi-million dollar project. And Mr. Hayes met with them, and he determined that it really wasn't, it wasn't a true nonprofit, it was really a for-profit enterprise, that they were calling themselves a nonprofit, and he was able to require that they include in their development order a, what's called a pilot agreement, payment in lieu of taxes, so that if the property was ever transferred to a nonprofit, I guess that's what it was, they were starting as a for-profit, but it was going to be transferred to a nonprofit, so that they wouldn't have to pay property taxes. He smoked that out. He sensed that that was what they were going to do, and required that pilot agreement, which was really watching out for the taxpayers, because somebody else who didn't care as much would have just let that go by, maybe, probably never even thought of it. But Randy did that, so thank you for that.
Good, all good stuff. And my comments, of course, are in writing. I said Randy has done an amazing job this past pandemic year, navigating a global pandemic while continuing to manage all our other legal matters successfully, is a testament to his years of experience and knowledge. Ormond Beach continues to be lucky to have a calm, steady hand at the helm of our legal department. He also delivers tremendous value in legal services for a city of our size, all the while protecting and serving our residents' best interests. And I look at his kind of being involved, almost starting the group of city attorneys and the county attorney working together on certain issues during the pandemic, collaborating, having those weekly discussions, shows his leadership, and kind of helped Volusia County stay on track with what the law was, and what we can and can't do, and just helped with our, with our overall response. That's just one example. I could go on and on, but Randy, we appreciate you and are really thankful that you're here to serve and protect Ormond Beach. With all that, I believe there's been a motion and second to accept. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you. It's a pleasure working with this commission. You know, I've worked with you all for many years now, and I've actually been practicing law for close to thirty-four years, twenty-nine of those, almost twenty-nine of those here. This is not an easy job, yours is not an easy job, and experience is welcome in this business, and I said this last year, and I'll say it again this year, public service is a humbling experience. It's very rewarding. It starts with you. The city manager and I are responsible for implementing your decisions, and our success depends on your cohesive collaboration, and most of the time it works pretty flawlessly. But you've got the best darn city manager in the country, I'm absolutely convinced of it. You've had a lot of fine city managers here. We've had the opportunity to see many other administrators from other jurisdictions, and she bar none is the best. She makes my job easy, she makes your job easy. And I will stand with her shoulder to shoulder in the thickest and thinnest of issues. She is just wonderful to work with, and it's not really, the success isn't a result of what she does or I do, it's really the staff people that work for us in a direction. We couldn't do it without them. And we're fortunate that we both have well-seasoned, experienced staff, but it starts with you. And we're just, we have a great working relationship, and we just like carrying out your decisions. But thank you all very much, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And with that, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And nine B.
Nine B, this is a discussion item titled City Manager Evaluation.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this one either.
I move approval of the city manager evaluation.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Commissioner Kent?
Sure. Again, I'll read my comments. Joyce, your professionalism, decision-making, and ethical conduct are all top-notch. The city of Ormond Beach is extremely fortunate to have you as our city manager. You are the best in the business. I did some calculations on your final rating as well, just so you know. And, you know, you're at a 4.93, which is a 98.6, which also rounds to a 99. So, you know, you and Randy get extremely high marks from this commission. I said this at last year's evaluation, and probably the year before that, the year before that, the year before that. You keep going, what, how many, eleven years, twelve years, where are we? Twelve? Okay. You are one of the best decisions I've ever made. Okay? And, you know, there have been some really, really good ones in my life, and we all have regrets, you know, and things, but you came before this commission twelve-plus years ago, and we interviewed you and peppered you with questions, and you stood right there. And Randy's right, you are the best, and we are so fortunate to have you. What were you thinking about Naples? A couple of years ago, like nonsense! Get that out of your head, I'm glad that's still your system. So, it is an absolute joy to work with you. You also are no nonsense. You both set high expectations for your staff, and that's because your commission sets high expectations for both of you. And, you know, it's evident in the way that you interact with people, the way that you handle residents, some that need a little more sensitivity than others, and it's evident in how you make sure that what comes before us is the best knowledge that you have at the moment. So I am, I'm extremely proud of you and your ratings as well. And Mayor, I know we don't talk about this anymore, but just because the audience is here, correct me if I'm wrong, at this time we used to always talk about salary, but a few years ago, we did a really nice salary adjustment that was fair for both our city manager and city attorney, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my recall was that since we made that salary adjustment, they would now receive what our general employees get for the raise, is that what we said?
That's my recollection.
That's my recollection as well, so, you know, I just wanted the audience to know. That's why we're not personally discussing, you know, salaries at this time, because we made that adjustment a few years ago to make sure that our city manager and city attorney were appropriately and fairly compensated, because both of them at the time were far behind, but we've adjusted that. So I just wanted to get that out there, so we knew about it, and great job, Ms. Shanahan.
Thank you, Commissioner and Deputy Mayor.
I would like to read my comments, which are very brief, but I want, I will add to them. And I wrote, Joyce, you are a strong, intelligent, and amazing woman whom I admire. And just to speak a little bit about that, you know, you are in a position of leadership and probably more male, with more males than females, and I have been in that position, not your position, but in that kind of a position before, and sometimes it's not easy. And sometimes women have to work a little harder than everybody else to get what they want, or to get things done. But I just know that, that everything that I've seen you do, and all the decisions that you make, and the way that you handle yourself, you are just, you earn everyone's respect, no matter what the gender is, and you have great knowledge, you care about people, and that shows, and you care about our city, and you love our city, and that truly shows as well. And I just, like I said, I really admire you, and I know some of the women out there, I see some heads nodding, you know, it's not always, it's not always easy, so I really commend you for all that you've done for everybody. And I just want to say, when I do the math on ninety-eight point six to ninety-eight point eight, I round it up to a hundred. So I will leave it at that. Thank you, Randy and Joyce, for all you do.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Littleton?
Ms. Shanahan, we are lucky to have you at the helm, and you are one of the best in the business. So as you see, I did run out of similes and metaphors and had to copy Troy's over there. I appreciate you because you make my job as a city commissioner easy, and for that I am forever grateful. Thank you.
Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Shanahan, I'll read my comments, too. You did a fabulous job navigating the city through the China virus situation, keeping people safe, providing relief to businesses, and continuing to provide essential city services with minimal revenue reduction. Continue to be that kind of a leader. And then I also went on to say, Ormond Beach is fortunate to have you as our city manager. You demonstrate honesty and integrity at the highest level in all of your official functions. Transparency is a very high priority, and it is evident in virtually every phase of the city operations. You are serious and thoughtful and always cheerful, a great combination of attributes. Thank you for your service to our city and its residents. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner. And I wrote, it was an exceptionally challenging year, and Joyce delivered more exceptional results as she navigated a global pandemic and still moved our city forward. Ormond Beach is blessed to have an outstanding manager, so I'll echo each of your comments. I think that's pretty much what that said, and Joyce, thank you. You do make all our lives easier, and you do an amazing job, your staff does an amazing job, you make sure of that, and we appreciate it, our residents appreciate it, which is the most important. So unless there's anything else, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And reports, suggestions, and requests, and we'll start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I might take a moment of personal privilege, I just want to thank you for your very generous evaluations. It's my privilege and honor to serve as your city manager. This is a wonderful community, and that couldn't even be any more evidenced than by your work here tonight, that you go over the details of things that we do and we approve, and you ask the tough questions, and you hold staff's feet to the fire, and we appreciate that. We try to vet all those questions ahead of time, but sometimes we can't guess them all, so, but we appreciate that, and we appreciate all the work that you put into serving this community, because it doesn't happen by magic. It happens by each one of you getting out, volunteering on boards and committees, talking to residents, and understanding their concerns, and then bringing them to me. We're the problem solvers, we're supposed to do that. So we're grateful that you let us do that, that they don't fester, that they don't become bigger than they have to be, and we can get on them right away. And I will say that the city attorney is by far the best I've ever worked with, and I've worked in jurisdictions where the attorney and the manager don't get along, and that's not good for anybody. Our whole staff respects what the city attorney's office does. The agenda process starts with his office, he sets the tone for that. And if staff is lackadaisical about deadlines and whatnot, we make sure we keep them all in, on task. But I value his counsel every day, there's not a day that goes by that I don't speak to him. And he must be out of town, if that's the reason we don't speak, because it's important for us to be on the same page on the issues that you all are dealing with, so that you aren't caught off guard, and that we can help you navigate that. I am enormously proud of your city employees, they have done a yeoman's job this year navigating the pandemic. The city, like other communities, are facing shortages in police officers, wastewater treatment folks, collections folks, it's difficult to hire those employees, and it's difficult all over the country. But they are creative in finding ways to make that happen, and I know it's a tough job for Sean and Chief Goffey right now for the staffing shortages, but they really do an amazing job holding it all together, so that the residents don't feel the impact of that. I'm enormously proud of staff during the budget process this year. One of the challenging goals we had of the strategic plan was to find an ongoing funding source for public safety. When you all put that goal out there, I thought, man, that's like, you know, the Lady Ruth in the swimming pool, I didn't know how I was going to manage that, because it just seemed undoable, it seemed too daunting to be truthful. But Kelly and her staff had a great plan forward, and so now you've established a fund that will continue, like your other capital project funds, to fund those much-needed resources that our public safety staff needs. So I congratulate you on doing that, and I congratulate staff on that, so thank you very much. My other comments, I'd like to read to you all. I have updated your schedule, please keep an eye on that workshop schedule. November second, we're going to talk about our health insurance update. I don't think that'll take a whole hour and a half, so I could probably do it in forty-five ins or an hour, so you could start at five forty-five or six, if you want to do that. Do you have a preference?
Six. Six.
And we'll talk fast.
Perfect.
And we had to move utilities in Centerville sixty-four to the sixteenth, and we've moved O B Life from October to November and December, just because we have some things we have to finish up, but I think that's all the same for now, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any for tonight.
Any questions for Joyce tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
I have two brief comments tonight. First of all, I just want to acknowledge what I think was the event of the week, last week, when our K nine, Kane retired, and I really wanted to bring attention to our staff in this photo. They did this, this was at the end of the retirement ceremony, and they walked Kane down the hallway, and all the officers stood at attention, and it was just the most moving moment for me, because I realized it really brought to life our police officers, and how connected they are, and respectful of each other, and under the chief's leadership. It was just a powerful moment to watch them, you know, they were solemn but respectful, and it was just, it just gave me goosebumps. And I think first responders have a special bond and a special connection to each other, and this, you could just feel it. And I think in our city, even more so, because they really enjoy each other, they really love Kane, and it was just a wonderful. wonderful, sad but wonderful event. My second comment, I think I mentioned this last year, it's one of my favorite meetings, because Randy and Joyce are just both so capable and smart, and so incredibly humble, so I love hearing your comments, and I love watching Joyce swarm through this, so, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Claire, and we go to the city attorney, Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Moore.
Thank you, and tonight, we start with Commissioner Selby.
I might be up first, thank you, Mayor, I really don't have any additional comments tonight, I think I've talked quite a bit this evening, other than to say that I really appreciate the fact that we frequent, or not frequently, but when we have the challenging discussions, and when we don't always concur, and when we have questions that sometimes are pretty tough for staff, that everybody is very civilized, and everybody respects everybody else's opinion, and we work through it, and we, you know, and we take a vote, and we press on, and so, with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Kent?
Yes, thank you. Couple of residents I haven't seen in a long time, and they've been here tonight, the whole meeting, Ed Wilson is also a city employee, thanks for being here tonight, and Randy Crabtree in the back, thank you for what you do in our community every day. You know, we mentioned earlier, you know, the Movies on the Halifax recently happened, Travis Sargent brought that up, you know, Movies on the Halifax and the fishing tournament, it just, it reminds me of Wyatt and me, and it's good stuff. And Robert Carroll in Leisure Services, this is a feather in your cap, I mean, you, your events are top-notch, and like, none other in any community I've ever been to, and our residents have grown accustomed to that type of treatment, and some would call that spoiled, I call it, I love it, I love that we have that level of finish for our employees, I'm sorry, for our residents, that level of finish, it's incredible. Ms. Shanahan, is that right, Austin Outdoor does our medians, is that, is that, or, no, they're called Yellowstone, now they're called Yellowstone? So, you know, listen, I understand people need to get paid more, and, you know, they ask for an increase, and we give it, you can tell them that the Zone Two Commissioner is not happy with the way the medians look right behind us. The mulch is in terrible condition, there's cigarette butts in it, like, when's the last time they've touched it, you know? They come before us, and ask for more money, and we give it to them, but our residents, again, are used to a certain level of finish, and as I was driving here today, after I waited for two cars to go through the light at US-1 and Granada on the six-second switch that I talked about earlier with DOT, I knew you'd like that, I was just looking at it, and I just thought, we can do better, and it's just a phone call that Joyce Shanahan needs to have with Yellowstone, and the only thing that would have made your comments tonight any better, Joyce, when you mentioned the Baby Ruth in the pool, I wish you could have had a redo, and you would have said Baby Ruth like Sloth in Goonies. You did, okay, that's embarrassing, you haven't seen that movie, homework assignment, watch The Goonies, one of the best movies from the eighties, and listen to how Sloth says Baby Ruth. With that, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Kent, Deputy Mayor Persis.
Good evening, everyone, I want to kind of piggyback on what Claire said about K-9 Kane's retirement, I know Commissioner Littleton and I were both there also, and it was really kind of a tearjerker, I mean, he is an amazing dog, his handler, amazing man, and he's going to be sorely missed, you know, when, one day, but it was really wonderful to see the police officers unite and support the handler and his K-9, and the bond that they all have, they all share that bond, whether Kane lived in their house or not, they all had that bond, and I had never seen anything like that before, and I'm so glad that I was there, so, I just want to commend you for, you all for doing that for him, it was just, it was just great. And I did, Commissioner Littleton and I presented Kane with a bone about this big, and so, I know at least he liked the smell of it, I could tell that, so, so that was, that was fun, so, that was just a great, great afternoon. Also, I just, I would like to direct staff, and I want to tell you, Ms. Shanahan, if you could work with Lucy Jackman to maybe get an echo grant for the Ormond Beach Performing Arts Center, like, the understanding that we, you know, I think they need one, about a $600,000 grant, and then, if that was possible, we could then amend our budget to help them out.
So, is that something that we can, that we can grant?
I support that, anyone else?
I do, too.
Commissioner Littleton supports it?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent and Commissioner Selby, yep. So, I think that's done.
That would be awesome, thank you, thank you, I know Ms. Jackman's going to be jumping up and down, wonderful, thank you.
Commissioner Littleton?
Nothing more to add, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I had Lucy Jackman to bring up as far as the budget item, and that may be something that, you know, it would require a budget amendment, it may be something that Weigel ends up doing as well, I don't know exactly how all that works, but Lucy, I met with a week or two ago, not that long ago, for the second or third time, she is persistent, she's a retired principal, and she loves our Performing Arts Center, she was very excited to tell me about Pryor and Lee coming to do a performance in January, there's going to be all kinds of fundraising opportunities surrounding that, I saw a post on Facebook from our Performing Arts Center, kind of starting to publicize that, so that's very exciting, but Lucy, you do an amazing job with the Friends of Recreation, you care about and love our city, and I think our entire commission sees that, and, so it makes you irresistible, really, and it's all for the benefit of our residents, again, it's a facility that we need to take care of, and, so it's great to see it getting the attention that it needs. Robert, The Goonies, I think you heard it from Commissioner Kent, First Friday Nights, it needs to be there, and Steven Spielberg?
Uh, let me check.
I think one of his initial, original films, but, so, you've got your, got your marching orders on that, and I'll try to be there as well, I think, was that Truffle Shuffle?
The Truffle Shuffle.
Okay.
With the chunk.
Chunk, good deal.
All right, let me check, let me check.
Awesome, it was one of Steven Spielberg's first adventures. DOT Workshop tonight, I thought was fantastic, the commission had amazing input, some of it, I think we already knew and had had discussions about, but some of it was new and fresh and important, and DOT was there to listen to it, so thank you all for your input on that, and we have a great relationship with them, partnership, and it's going to, it's going to benefit our residents. Let's see, the, Commissioner Selby, you mentioned about the challenging questions and civility in light of sometimes difficult, passionate arguments, and I agree with you 100%, this commission, we're not always perfect, but we do it, I think, better than many commissions, and that takes work, that each of you are willing, willing to put in, and you had made a comment at some point tonight, that, you know, you might lose the vote, but you wanted to say it anyway, and that, I think, was, when you said it, I thought, that's so important, you know, because nobody wants to lose a vote, but at least as long as you've said everything to document your position and explain why you think the way you do, then it's hard to really argue with whatever the, whatever the results were, so, thank you for pointing that out. K-9 Kane, that was a emotional evening, I'm sure, for everybody involved, staff, and Deputy Mayor Persis and Commissioner Littleton, thank you for being there, I know PD appreciated that, there was an article, I think, either that day or the day before, in the News Journal, about a push for the legislature to make sure, well, to create an entity, nonprofit entity to make, and fund it, to make sure that retired service animals for police and fire, or whatever agency, FWC, get the medical care they need, and so that was of great concern to me, I checked with City Manager Shanahan and Chief Godfrey that same day, and they reported back that even though that agency doesn't exist, Ormond Beach will make sure that K-9 Kane has the care he needs for as long as he needs it, so I was proud of our city for stepping up and making that happen. Yes, ma'am?
My first point is that Dr. Salzberg's office is very generous with their services to all K-9s, so we are very interested in him, I'm sure he has some chance of winning through the council.
Wonderful, yep, Dr. Salzberg is one of the greats. I've been working kind of behind the scenes, I want to let the commission know about it, to try and have Seabreeze High School, this is a small thing, but I think it's important, start an inaugural fishing club, there are grant monies available from the Fishing Game Commission, and I talked to Ike Leary about it, he was 100% in before I could even finish explaining it, and I think there's Seabreeze students who would love to be engaged in the initial or inaugural Seabreeze High School Fishing Club, and really, there's not that much to it, you show up and you fish for half an hour, or whatever, I don't know what fishing clubs do exactly, but I have at least one kid that would be interested in that, I suspect Commissioner Kent might have a child, young man, who might be interested in that, and Ike was so supportive, he didn't even care about the grant money, he was willing to make it happen, which is just how Ike is, and, but I think it would be good to get the grant money, we need to get Seabreeze's cooperation on it, I have, I know Robert's reached out, but hasn't heard back, and so that's kind of the next, the next step, there's parents that are willing to support that, I'd be willing to, you know, be a sponsor if I had to, I think it can be a teacher or a parent of a child at the school, Commissioner Kent might be willing to be a sponsor, it doesn't have to be, all they need is one, and it doesn't have to be me, but that's something I would like to see happen, and I know of at least three or four students there that would be willing to participate in that, so, that's something that I'm working on, and the other thing I wanted to close with is the Mary McLeod Bethune statue that's going to be put in the United States Capitol, there's a statutory fund, and there's different sponsorship levels for that, I would like this commission, on behalf of our residents, to make a financial contribution to the statutory fund, they have different levels, different sponsorship levels, platinum is $25,000, gold is $10,000, and there's a couple other levels, but Mary McLeod Bethune was an amazing woman, an amazing leader, and she had a big impact on our community, and Ormond Beach had a history, I believe, and I think the history backs it up, of supporting her in financial ways and in many other ways, she's, I'm told, responsible for the Pace Center, back when it was an original school, and so, that's something that I'd like to get the commission's input on, and maybe have Joyce, if she needs to, bring that back to us with whatever supporting documentation, I know we can't spend money without having an agenda item, but are there at least two other commissioners that'd be willing to have her bring some information back for us?
I would just need to know, where does the money from the statue fund go, what does it do, you know, there's just, and the reason, the reason I send it out is, you know, my mind is-
Is often boggled when I look at nonprofits, and I see what the CEO annual salary is, like, jaw-dropping, so I just need to know, you know, where the statue fund money is going to, like, I'm pretty sure it's already been paid for, but I just, I don't want to give money away to something I don't know. I just need more info.
Understood, thank you, yep, I appreciate that, and with that, at 9:05 PM, we'll be adjourned, thank you all.